So I'm recording.
Five thirty one.
I'm hoping I'm recording.
Alright, everybody, we wanna welcome you here tonight. Um it's five little, five thirty two, let's get started, and so we have our full time. This is our work session, and we're gonna start out by hearing a presentation. If, do you have anything to get us going? We're gonna start out with a presentation from Mr. Jensen, a Box Elder, no, you're not, you're a Bear River High School math teacher, I don't know who got that wrong. Anyway, no, not that it matters, but Mr. Jensen, thanks for being here, and I know you have some colleagues.
Emotional support.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Awesome, thank you. So, I am a teacher and didn't really know how to start, so I'm starting with a learning target. I am hoping that today we can understand a little bit more about our current reality at Box Elder School District regarding math instructional time, especially compared to the rest of the state. Uh, so first, we're gonna start with some data. I have known for a while that we didn't have a bunch of time compared to the rest of the state, but I didn't really know how much. So, there was a day that I got every district in the state of Utah, chose a high school from that district, and counted up how many minutes they have per year in teaching math. And I have it on this paper that I'm about to give you. So, before I do, some things that I want you to notice are where we are. So, we're kinda low, but like, are we in the middle-ish, or we, where are we at? Uh, and then especially compared to cash and rich, they're close to us geographically, and more or less close to us demographically, and they're also on trimesters. So they're a good school to look at to compare, how do we rank with them?
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
This slide presentation and the graph, he's gonna, is all on the board book, so feel free to look it up.
Excellent. Um, and then there's also some districts that have four-day weeks, or online only on Friday, how do we compare with those? So. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, any of the ones on trimesters?
Yeah.
Sure.
Any of the ones on trimesters I highlighted in yellow? So a few things to notice, we are in fact, at the very bottom. There is not a single district in the state of Utah that has less time for math than we do, which is kinda sad. And if you notice of the other districts on trimesters, all of them have at least one year where they have math all year. Some of them have both years, sophomore and junior year where they have math all year. Uh, so for cash and rich, the year that they have math all year, they have literally more than double the amount of time that we have to teach math. Okay, so. This means from the teacher's perspective, what we have to do is just cut stuff, we don't have time. So. Oh, actually, uh, we, uh, for a PLC recently, counted up how much of the core we actually teach. And if we average out sophomore and junior year, we teach approximately fifty percent of the core, which in education terms is an F. That's not great. Uh, so some of the things we cut are discovery lessons, which theoretically are a great way for students to understand. It's a good way to introduce things, they can discover things for themselves, it helps them remember better, but it takes more time, which we don't have, so they're gone. A review of old topics, my coworker, Michelle Alexander, says that in her four years of teaching, we have cut three chapters from sophomore math. And it always comes down to, well, yeah, this is on the ACT, it's on the core, they need it, but they saw it like, three years ago, so hopefully they remember, and we have to cut it. Some things literally are, they haven't seen it since intermediate school, but it's review, so it's cut. We also cut ACT review. We have ACT problems on almost every assignment junior year, and we never get to them, cuz we don't have time. Also, application problems, if we can learn something, and then talk about how it's used in the real world, that's awesome, but that's an extra day, and time we don't have. This also means for the teachers, extra work. Every day, the math teachers are there for at least an hour, sometimes two hours, helping students who don't have time to understand it in class, and we can't slow down for them. So we just have to keep going, and they have to come in after school. Which is especially damaging to students in a less than ideal socioeconomic bracket, or sometimes racial lines are widened because students can't stay after school, and if we expect them to need to stay after school, that's really rough for those students. And every now and again, depending on the year, sometimes students can choose where they wanna go for intervention. Whenever that happens, our intervention time is packed full of students who are trying to get the extra help that they need. So from the student's perspective, I think it is best summed up by this picture. They are just trying to survive. Um, on average, in ninth grade at the middle school, where they have math all year, students are expected to do about zero problems of homework at home, for a total of zero minutes. Because in general, they learn something one day, they work on the homework the next day. That's the time that they have. Then they go to tenth grade, and it is expected to do on average twenty-five problems of homework at home every night, that should take about forty-five minutes. It can be quite a culture shock for students who usually don't do homework at home, to suddenly have to be doing homework every night. And then in eleventh grade, it gets worse, there's fifteen problems on average, which is less, but it takes about an hour and a half. So it's not surprising why students just don't do their homework, cuz they don't have time for that. So, next slide, what it could look like, if just regular sophomore math was all year. At Bear River High School, it would add about eight classes for a whole year, which is about one part-time teacher. And this would keep honors at two trimesters. So, I know one concern about making math all year is money, that's not too bad. I think, I don't know, but. Um, and then the positives would be amazing, our ACT scores would be so much better. Uh, I talked to the Ridgeline Department head, where not junior year, but sophomore year, they have math all year. And in twenty twenty-three, they were the eighth highest for math ACT in the state for public schools. So, we could do a lot with ACT scores. And mental health would be so much better for students and teachers. Um, so one of the other big arguments to keep two trimesters is choice and electives are very important. So, in twenty twenty-five, just last year, there, at Bear River High School, we had three hundred and sixty-five pathways that were completed. And eighty-two percent of seniors were enrolled in either concurrent enrollment, or bridge, or both. Which is awesome, especially for our community, that's great. But frankly, how students are using this choice is mostly in this picture. They just leave. So, I took a sample of thirty-nine students who just graduated. Two years ago, they were in regular math, so not in honors, not in the slow track, this is the target group that we want to extend to all year. Of those thirty-nine students, those that graduated early, had parent release, not seminary, but parent release where they just went home, were an office aide or teacher's aide, or had credit recovery where they were probably making up their math credit that they failed, it was seventy-four percent of them. So, for most students, this wouldn't be taking away an elective for them, it would be filling a hole that's already there. Uh, and not only that, that same sample, those that graduated early, or had so much parent release that they weren't even full-time students anymore, they were part-time students, it was forty-six percent of them. So, the students aren't necessarily using the choice that they're given. And for those, the twenty-six percent that didn't have an easy hole to fill, most of those were at the top of the class anyway, and would probably be okay in honors, if they really wanted to keep their electives, they could keep it at two trimesters by taking honors. So, to sum up, going back to our learning target, I hope that this helps us better understand the current reality at Box Elder School District, which, as a reminder, is not great. We're at the very bottom of the state, we're doing a disservice to our students and to the math teachers. And I hope that with this, potentially by next school year, or at the very latest, the following school year, where ninth grade is coming up to the high school anyway, and there's gonna be some shuffling, and probably some hiring of new teachers, we can get sophomore math, or maybe even junior or regular math to be all year. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Mr. Jensen, I appreciate it.
And I will just say, having had, I'm a math teacher too, so I, I know what you're talking about. Um, I just have a question though, looking at the, because I know that they're changing the core, like the standards. Um, have you looked at that at all, like, how is this, like, when you say we were cutting, 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 in the new standards, are the, is that gonna be the same case? Or have they trimmed back the standards somewhat to make it, not much, I mean, I've looked at it overview, but I haven't. I, I agree, they need more math, I'm a hundred percent in agreeance. And I know that as a, as a teacher and as a math teacher, students learn by, like, and if they don't like it, and they just get through it, then those things that they learned, that they may hang on to, if you're just speeding through, they forget a lot quicker. So, you know, like, I have a son that's, he's a, he's really good at math, but he took, we had an advanced pathway, he's a senior this year, but last year he took AP Calculus as a junior. He actually did worse on his math ACT as a junior than he did as a sophomore, because he wasn't having that.
For attendance.
Even though he knew it really well, when he was a sophomore, the, the AP stuff, or the calculus stuff isn't on the ACT. I mean, it wasn't significant, it wasn't terrible, but I, even just that, for a kid that really gets it, I can see, and for the kids that just struggle in the first place, and they're like, just get through the class so I can get the credit. So, there's my perspective.
Has something changed since you were teaching math? Then was it the same when you were teaching?
No, I was, well, I taught five periods. And then I also taught six periods. So that was kinda, that was kinda, and then right after that, um, I became a assistant principal, so I taught in five and six. To kinda support what Michael and the others are saying, I think, and, and by the way, since there are so many schedules, I mean, there's so many varieties and everything, what I, what I did, and I just use, I use nine ninety hours, just so that we could have a common number. I know that we're not on nine ninety, in fact, that's not even a requirement in the state, but just to use a number so that we can get a flavor of the, the schedule that we're on, and so we're all talking apples with apples, you okay with that? Again, based on a hundred eighty days of instruction, and I get parent-teacher conference, and, uh, just to make it all the same, okay? You can see that the schedule that we're on, which is on line five, six-period sixty-day trimester, roughly, and again, I know that your class bridges are what, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and then on Monday, or on Fridays, are thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, I get all the, I've done all the non-numbers, but just as a rule, a trimester is thirty-three hundred minutes. You compare that to a semester of forty-two thirty, if it's a seven period, or if you go to an eight-period AB, it's thirty-seven twelve. I know you might be thinking more, but they only get class every other day. And then five period is thirty-nine sixty. Um, if we're on a five-period trimester, that is by far the one that produces the most amount of time, again, if you're staying with two trimesters. I know this is ugly, Brian, I apologize. The point that I think, uh, Michael's pointing out is, this column G to the right of, I think that's yellow, um, eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty minutes if you have year-round math, as opposed to, or excuse me, nine hundred, nine thousand nine hundred minutes is what we have for like, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and ninth in math. They get the nine hundred and nine, nine hun, nine thousand nine hundred, whereas, uh, at Bear River High, Box Elder High, they're at sixty-six hundred. Compared to all of their counterparts for a one-credit class, you can see that that's why we're dead last. Is because of the schedule that we're on, that's just the way it goes. When you divide by six, and you can see that the decision back in two thousand and nine, uh, for budgetary reasons, went to a six-period from a five-period. We now have eighteen, uh, elective choices, whereas before, we were at fifteen elective choices, so we get more choices. And in, uh, at six, seven, eight, nine, they went year-round math instead of two trimesters. So really what they have is the same amount of choice, they have fifteen. But the high schools, they offered eighteen, but they really only get two tries, so they've lost instructional time. Kids get more elective choice, some use it wisely, many don't, thus this, we're feeling like we're kinda swimming. Uh, and just one final thought, and then you guys, uh, can, and I'll share this with you. Our required graduation credits right now are thirty, but we actually can earn thirty-six, so you're looking at twelve more classes, which is almost a three-quarters of a year, that if a kid says, I don't need those, I could, home release, I could.
Which are these kids you're talking?
Right. Um, anyway, so, that's, uh, I'll share this with you, I just thought it would be kind of trying to put us all on the same schedule, so to speak, of why our instructional minutes are less. It's amazing what our teachers do with less.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
In, in something that you said, and I wasn't here, but I've heard the story how we ended up with six periods versus five periods.
Yeah.
You said for budgetary reasons, but doesn't it almost cost more to do six periods than it does to do five?
No, it's actually, and I'll, I'll point that out, so right here.
All prep time.
So, when, um, you're on a, when, when you're on five period, twenty percent of your teachers are on a prep, on any given day, or on any given hour. When we went to sixteen point seven, we increased a teacher's workload by another class, didn't, and then we were able to not hire as many teachers, that was a budgetary reason. Now, the, the side benefit was, there's more elective choice, but that only happened at the high school who lost the most instructional time.
Well, I know my memory isn't very good, but my memory of when we did that, it was on the board then, I don't remember any discussion about budgetary.
It was more just offer.
It just kinda, well, and, and.
Give a kid's choice.
And it, it did, but it did happen right after the oh, oh eight dive, and we were really concerned, uh, district employees got, uh, two days of severance, or, uh.
Furlough.
Furlough paid, there was, it was a time, now, obviously, they didn't, that first year ago, you're fired, we're too heavy, but they did move down how many teachers we need, so financially, you're right, Brian, but it was during that time when the district was very concerned. But it was because of what you said also, which was choice. So.
Oh, can I ask you a question? So, if I understood you right, your, your request is that you would like sophomores to go all year, and if possible, juniors? Is that, is that what your request was?
For the regular classes, I think the honors would be okay, but. And keep, keep the ninth grade, and they will keep them all year.
And what are sophomores now? Are sophomores two?
Yeah, we have kind of three tracks, there's honors, which is two, regular, which is two, and then there's a slower track that goes all three. And that's especially for students who need to be in like a team talk class, or just need more time.
So, on the sophomores, it's the middle track that you're asking that that would go all year?
Yes.
Which is the majority of the students.
Yeah, so that's.
And I would say even, another challenge with the only two trimesters is if you have math, try one, try two, and not try two, try three, you got a huge gap.
It's like a summer time.
Or even a one, three, and you don't have the time to review.
See, yeah.
That you test.
That you don't remember.
That's nice testing.
Or there's a few students who have it, one and two as a sophomore, don't have it third, don't have it summer, don't have it first, almost a year later, are back to math.
Yeah.
That, and I agree, that's a problem. The next, another question I have is that you've given us comparison as far as number of hours, how do we compare in?
Scores. I would go back to Keith's comment, to two, our own, a little, a little bit, I feel like we're doing amazing with what we have. We're like, just below average, which, given what we have, is amazing. But it's because we're all staying after, we're all pushing through and doing so much extra work to try to make it to average.
I might just add a little more about Karen, the eleventh grade assessment, it, rise used to be three to eleven, and then they stopped that a handful of years ago, and they went three to eight. So now when you get into nine, ten, it's a practice ACT, where fifty percent of the test is in alignment with the Utah Core, and the other fifty percent are national. And then the ACT, as you know, is the national norm, so the amount of actual data that compares our school with another school in terms of the content is not there. Uh, Jeff Morris, our director of assessment, has told us though, that moving, uh, that not, maybe next year, that the rise will go up to tenth grade. So we'll at least go to three through ten, but right now, it's three through eight. So to ask, what is the most valid, you know, are we, how, it's really hard to compare a national norm test on and, and a, a class that's not really being tested specifically for that content, it's more of a general math.
I, I have a question, you were saying that a lot of times those students that just don't feel like they need those extra credits end up going part-time? Is that like an actual, like, declared part-time student?
Yes.
Well, they, we, you can, you can have one home release.
One hour of parent release.
One parent release, after that, they, they're not considered full-time students.
So does that take away our WPU amount?
Yes, it does.
So, taking, I'm not saying, I don't know what I'm saying, just a question, of if we take away all those extra choices, that students then don't have to even go to school, are we missing out? This makes me sound like I just want money, but I'm, you know, just to make it financially sound, to keep, I don't, to keep students at the school so that we can receive that type of funding, so we can actually support having a half-teacher, or, does, does that make sense? Like, would, would, would the money that we're losing be made up by having that opportunity of having?
Would it pay for the teaching?
Do you understand?
I do, I, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Oh, yeah.
I, I need to clarify, we're funded on membership, not attendance. Membership is how many days a someone enrolled in school, attendance is how many days they come to school. So, as long as they're enrolled as a full-time student, not a half-time student, and they, how many days they attend does not affect our, our, uh, our funding. Now, the legislature would like to possibly change that this coming year, they're looking at potentially incorporating attendance in the funding model, but as of today, it's based upon their enrollment days.
Which is what she's talking about, because if they take it parent and, parent release and work release and seminary, and, right, they're no longer a full-time student.
So releases count as enrollment.
But like, for example, my son.
That's enrollment, which is what our money's based off of, that's exactly what.
Yes.
So my son, there's six periods of high, he's a senior this year, he doesn't have six period all year, he has parent release, which is good. But, for him, and then, and he's well on track, and then he had, I told him, you gotta fill up your classes, well, he went to a class, he doesn't need it to graduate, he didn't like it, I said, okay, we'll, we'll take you out. So I took him out of another class, now he only goes to school four out of the six days, and he has release time, so he's, he's a part-time student. So we're losing money on him, because he doesn't need any more classes, he's got all concurrent enrollment, like, it's, there's no benefit for him to be at school. It's more pressure and stress, and he wants to work and do other things, and so, what, to answer your question, I think there are a lot of kids that I think are taking release because they don't need any credits, and it wouldn't, that's my opinion.
And then the other side of the coin, there are a lot of kids, we saw a lot of them at the play, who want those, um, opportunities for, um, having different universal classes. I think that, you know, your ask of, of maybe making it a free trimester for sophomore, it would take away one, what, do we call it, um?
Like an elective?
Elective, elective, I, I think that that is, somehow we can.
I had, I had one, I totally see what you're saying, I had one of my kids who did want to be involved in every extra thing he could, and even he was like, I've got extra time. He was doing student council and all the classes, I, I just think that there's too much.
I was gonna say.
So two of them.
I think there's.
There, there are people, there are students though, that are also taking early morning seminary, cuz they've got their schedule full, so.
So, and we had, and we had ninety-six students take a, a BESD online course, you know, to help free up, that we just started this year. Um, and another thing to maybe just throw into the, the hat here, this discussion, though, the hat is, we're talking math, uh, ninth grade science, um, ninth grade science, they only get two trimesters, so all of ninth grade gets two tries in science. If we do one, I, I have this feeling, we may have next month, we may have language arts, and we may have all the sciences. I'm not saying, you know what I'm saying, Michael knows that math is the most important.
I've lived through that. As soon as we gave one.
But as soon as you give one free, then there's gonna be, well, I want free, because I have the same, I mean, all of this applies to every class. They still have less instructional minutes than their counterparts.
So I don't know if this is, forgive me if this is not the right place or time, but what would happen, or does the math support going to a semester look? Can I bring that up right now? Can I say that out?
I would love semesters.
You would love semesters?
Yes, but that's not, that's about my pay grade.
You gotta realize, when you say semester, it can be a lot of things, there are seven-period semesters, there are AB semesters, there's a lot of things there. And every time you talk about that, you're talking about money, how much it costs to do AB and all those types of things.
And prep time and different things.
And like.
So there's, there's a lot of variations.
But every district in the state except for five are doing that, right?
Yeah.
I, I, yeah.
Are they all AB, or some?
No, they're not really, no.
I just think it's an interesting thing to look at, I know you're losing electives, and that's really hard for some of the students that are really, that go for electives. But if school is to prepare you for your future, and electives can do that to some degree, your, your core classes are going to propel you into being a more, I don't know, actually, I shouldn't say that.
I was gonna say, I don't know that I would agree with that, because one of the secret sauces that I think Box Elder has is that we have, I think, one of the highest pathway completion rates in the state. We have a lot of students who do the pathways because they have that option with electives, and the state isn't. Um, one of the meetings I just went to, they're like, you know, we've gotta realize that higher education isn't for all students, and by having the CTE classes and those kind of options, is probably a great.
So, with pathways, is it harder to do pathways with a semester?
No.
They don't have as many elective classes.
Davis has, I don't know if that's the truth, I'm not kidding.
I, I'm just saying, let's not, are we asking for one semester, let's not upturn the whole cart.
Well, I think we need to get some hard data in recent numbers, because I think the students now are different than when we, when that change was made from five to six, however many years.
Sixteen years.
Sixteen years ago, and I know that we all have like anecdotal data, like your children and my children are different about what they chose their electives and how they're choosing their time. But I would like hard data on how many parent releases, how many, um, like home releases, like, just they're not taking classes, and how many are filling up their schedule, and what are they filling it up with? Like, are they taking three theater classes? Are you could argue, yeah, that's really important, but could you do with two, to get an extra year of math, I think that would be.
Julie, I will take that as a sign.
Okay, thank you, because I think that's where we're looking at, we've got to see, because, like it or not, math is required for graduation. And if you've got kids that are making up credit, because they failed it, or they're not understanding it, and how many remedial math classes at any junior college that you go to? Like how, I, I've had, I tried to tune my brother-in-law to get through college algebra, and I could not even help him, and he had to go a different route to get, and he, now he's got a master's degree, but math is tough for some kids. And when you have big gaps, and you have crammed in, their brains cannot process and function and, and grasp it like that. Some can, the honors kids, they're fine, they can get it, and there's some that just think that way, there are some, you can sit with them and explain it for three hours, and then you come back the next day, and they're like, yeah, I don't get it. So, but giving them more opportunity and the review and the consistency, I think is very important, and it's a, it's, like, this isn't like, you know, sewing. You, it's math, you've gotta, you've gotta, even if, even if you're not applying in education.
And I think that the argument that was said, you know, sometimes you go, you don't have a last trimester, you don't have a first trimester.
Yeah.
That is hard, I, I agree, and I think that it's worth looking into all of these things, I'm just saying, let's not make massive changes if all we need to do is add another semester. I'm just saying, let's not make massive changes if all we need to do is add another semester of math.
Well, I think we need to get the data, I think that's why.
Doing our due diligence of understanding.
I'm not saying we're gonna, oh yeah, let's do it right now, I, we obviously can't make that decision right now.
We're not making any decisions.
Yeah, like, right, we're just getting information and I think we need, this is the more information that we need.
Well, I would argue that, that this is a no-brainer, we're, we're at the bottom of the pack and we need to, we need to increase the hours. How we do that, case, you know, you're working on giving kids flexibility with online and stuff, so maybe we can have a cake and eat it too and increase those hours, but then give opportunities for kids that wanna, wanna do electives.
And can we add in that data, the, or data, uh, the, this is math, what is it compared to that language arts and science? Like at least, it'll be the exact same.
Because they're all the same, well, I don't, I can't speak to that.
Same minutes.
Some of them are a little bit different, because like I talked to the Ridge Lane School and they had math all year for sophomores and they used to have language arts all year for sophomores and then they took it back to two trimesters because they said, we don't need it that much. So some of them will be a little bit different, but for the most part, it's, it's.
I think it depends on.
We can dig a little bit.
But when they go back to test enough in the tenth grade, they're gonna want more.
Yeah, well, maybe. I just think of like, some of the, the classes that we take as classes that used to be just extracurricular after-school things. That we're, now that's a class.
And I think the students are really want choice, will find ways to make it work, so. Do you know what's taking early morning seminary and online stuff?
If they get the draw, because early morning seminary, I mean, two of the years my kids couldn't even get it early mornings. I don't think they're.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's just a variety of students and I think that that's what we talked about, is finding flexibility without making massive cuts that affect everybody.
Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and for your work.
We're gonna move to the kindergarten intake.
We have Heidi Jensen here, um, in the maroon pants and Michelle Southwick in the maroon sweater.
So coordinated.
And they are our grade level chair leads. We have, um, a teacher from every school on every grade level, serves on our district P L C team in elementary. And these two head up our kindergarten team and lead out that work to make sure that we're all aligned and consistent in offering our students the best that we can for learning at high levels. So these two have been doing many, many extra hours this year, getting everything aligned, but also putting a lot of energy and effort into making sure that what we provide for students in the way of assessments is aligned with the state code and with what's best practices for students, so. Right?
Okay, well, thank you for having us, we just wanted to tell you a little bit about, um, how kindergarten worked this year compared to other years and why we made the changes that we made.
So just as a preface, so that we know that we're all within state code, the state code does allow us five educational service days at the beginning of the school year for assessment of students entering kindergarten. So the plan that we came up with used those five days. Um, I think the proposed plan that we've got for next year also uses those five days, but that's all within the state code of what we're allowed.
The state used to provide twelve days to students, they used, they gave twelve days for kindergarten at the beginning of the year and during the middle of the year.
And when did they change that?
When all-day kindergarten was put into place, they removed it completely. And then so many kindergarten teachers were reaching out to legislators that they put it back into code and said, we've got to go back and backtrack because it was putting such an undue burden on the kindergarten teachers to complete the assessments and balance their classes, so.
Um, so why did we need to adjust the first two weeks of kindergarten? Full-day kindergarten classes throughout the district were very unbalanced. Some classes had massive behaviors in them, some classes were super low and had a different challenge. So our goal was to create more balanced classes to better support teachers and students. We needed to balance behavior, academic and socially emotional needs.
So some of the suggestions or things that we have tried in the past were, um, these were things that we had tried in looking at a new plan and in trying to figure out the plan for next year as well. These were some suggestions that people had and also things that we had tried in the past. So we had tested students the first week of August, we tried that a couple of years ago and that really was not very successful. We got very low participation, um, lots of families were still out of town and our teachers really did not like that because it brought them out of summer. I think we tested on August seventh and eighth and that turned your brain back on and your summer's pretty much over after that. So we had a lot of teachers that were not fans of that and really it was not very accurate data because we got such low attendance. Um, we tried testing at kindergarten roundup, roundup is usually in the spring and we found that once again, we have very low attendance, about thirty-five percent attended kindergarten roundup. And when you test a student in spring, um, by the time they're ready to come to school in August, that data can change a lot. And that also didn't give us any type of information that we could do, that was just academic information. Um, we had a lot of recommendations to test the first week of school. The biggest problem with that was that first week of school is the only week that we're allowed to have minimum days. So if we tested on those minimum days, then that threw our kindergarten students into the second week of coming full-time. Um, and that, believe it or not, is really rough on kindergarteners, that, that's, that makes it really hard. Also, if we test the first week of school, then we don't have a chance to have them attend first and, um, watch that behavior. So then our classes, that was the biggest challenge in past years was the behavior challenges. We kind of hadn't, had figured out how to, um, separate them academically, but the behaviors, we, there was huge gaps in behaviors. Um, some wanted us to, let's see, test the first week after students are released, that was recommended. Um, we could see kind of some flaws with that, teachers, we didn't feel like we could ask our teachers to stay that late into the evening. They have obligations with family and also, I can tell you that a kindergartner will not test well at six o'clock at night. They're way too tired and won't, once again, have after-day data. Um, they recommended having substitute teachers while teachers test during the school day during the first week of school. And we thought that sounded like absolute chaos because then, then the substitute teachers are, you know, putting into place all the routines and expectations and we did not like that idea. So those are some of the ideas and suggestions that we could kind of see were flawed right from the beginning or that we tried and didn't work.
So this is how we started this kindergarten school year. So students attended the first full week of minimum days while the teachers and parents observed behavior. We had that scheduled for five days. Um, during that week, and it got cut short this year for, um, you know, we didn't know that was going to happen. So during that week, all the teachers were able to work with every student as they rotated between the classes. So we tried to get them in different student configurations, going to all of the classrooms so the teachers could see all of the kids. Um, then we had Labor Day and then Tuesday and Wednesday, the kids were scheduled to come for a thirty-minute assessment block where we, um, we tested them on acadians and then some other just beginning level skills that we could use to split up the classes academically. Then that Thursday, um, the teachers and administrators, we looked at the data, we analyzed it and we created classes based on that data, behavior data and academic data. On Friday, we were really excited to get our class lists because we were really wondering who's coming to our class and we wanted to get prepared for them. So then we started preparing for them at that time. And then, um, the following Monday, we prepped for the morning and then we had an open house for students where they could come and visit their assigned teacher in their assigned classroom. And then the following Tuesday was their first official day of kindergarten in their assigned classes.
So following this, we sent a survey out to all of the kindergarten teachers. We have forty-one kindergarten teachers in the district and, no, we had, yeah, forty-one kindergarten teachers in the district. So of those kindergarten teachers, eighty-eight percent of teachers wanted to adjust, improve, refine and continue with this plan. Twelve percent of teachers wanted to throw it out, so there were five of the forty-one that didn't want to do it, but the rest wanted to refine it and, and continue with it. Um, sixty-eight percent of teachers felt their classes were more balanced. Thirty-two percent of teachers felt their classes were about the same. But in talking with our district team, we realized that twenty-seven percent of kindergarten teachers didn't have anything to compare it with. They either were first-year brand-new teachers or they were new to the grade. And so they, I think that thirty-two percent, you'd have to take into consideration that most likely twenty-seven percent of those didn't have any comparison to years past.
Um, a survey was also sent out to all parents of kindergarten students in the district. Twenty-nine percent of kindergarten parents responded to the survey, it's a pretty low number. Overall, seventeen percent of the parents in the district had, had negative feedback or comments regarding how kindergarten started this year.
So.
So seventeen percent of the twenty-nine percent, so.
Seventeen percent out of the total.
Seventeen percent total.
Yeah.
Seventeen percent total.
So the ones that responded were more likely to be negative than the people.
I think. Yes, yes, definitely, yep. I, I think we heard a lot of, um, a lot of commotion at the very beginning and people saying, well, the parents didn't like it, the parents didn't like it, nobody liked this, but when we actually dove into the data, it was seventeen percent. So less than one in five were unhappy with how we started, which was, I, surprisingly low really for, you know, the chatter that we kind of heard, but.
Did you communicate to the families and parents what you were going to do?
Yes, yes, we tried very hard. It went out during the summer, it went out multiple times, it went out multiple ways. We tried to really over-communicate what our plan was and how it was going to work.
Which is a real challenge, a lot of them may not.
They just don't, yeah, if they haven't registered, they're not getting the information. If they don't come to kindergarten roundup, they didn't get the information, which is something, we're wondering if that's really worthwhile. To have a solution for that for the future, but it went out and even on the survey, one of the things we asked is like, do you feel like this was communicated to you? And, and the majority said they felt like it was communicated for those that were well-informed. Some were like, we just didn't really understand the reason why, or they hadn't experienced the days when kindergarten was given twelve days for testing. So that's part of it too, is like, if there are newer families who haven't brought their kids to kindergarten, they're like, why is this happening that you're taking days off to test? When if they came three, four years ago, they knew that's something that the district always did, the first weeks of school and the last weeks of school. Sorry, you were going to say?
No, I just wondered if the why was communicated as well.
We tried, we tried really hard to communicate the why, um, and, and spell it all out and, and let them know, you know, the biggest why was we had such unbalanced behavior of classrooms and that is really hard for kindergarten. I mean, you've got five to six-year-olds if they're completely out of control, you've got five of them in your class, the other fifteen are not getting the best academic construction. So we really wanted to fix that and balance that so that we could really, you know, at high levels, that was the goal.
Teachers in the group also mentioned, like, in the focus group said, like, these parents didn't talk to us about their frustrations or that they didn't like it or ask us questions, you know? Um, there was also some teachers who said, you know, like, we could do a better job of helping parents understand the why, right?
Helping them to see the bigger picture, they didn't understand what we understood in making the plan. They understood some, but not all the why, I mean, there's a lot of whys and a lot of different factors that made things hard that they thought would be better ideas, but they didn't understand how many roadblocks there were to all of those. And we would like to better communicate that going forward, we learned from that, that we can do a better job there.
Can we have an idea for you?
Have a plan.
To make sure everyone gets that in my, so here we go.
So how did we respond to the data from teachers and parents? Our district kindergarten team met, which was, like Heidi Jo said, was one kindergarten teacher from each school. We met to review the survey, we had data for them that we had gathered, that showed them the, the comments and the feedback from the teams and we were able to all see, you know, what the results of that survey was. Um, the whole focus of the discussion was to decide what would be best for kids and support teachers. And we spent about three and a half hours refining the plan and came up with three options that we thought could work for next year. And then a survey with those three options were sent to every kindergarten teacher so they could vote. So A, B or C vote for your, um, they could vote for kind of, it was on a, a scale of one, two and three and they could vote one, two or three for which one they preferred.
Um, so those survey results, thirty-nine out of the forty-one teachers responded to that survey and the majority of teachers voted for the following plan. Monday through Wednesday, students would attend minimum school days while teachers and parents observed behavior. That's exactly like we did this year. Thursday and Friday, students come back for a twenty-minute appointment, um, for academic testing. We thought we could shorten that, we didn't need the thirty minutes that we thought that we needed. Uh, Monday would be Labor Day, Tuesday we would spend creating the classes, Wednesday, teachers prepare their classrooms for students. And then this was, um, something that a lot of the teachers were really interested in. Thursday, we would do parent intake conferences, so we would meet with each individual student and their parents by themselves in our classroom and go over the data that we collected, that was a big problem and, um, concern that the parents said. We brought it back for testing and then nobody even really told us the results of that testing or why they even, you know, what, what my kid did and why that was needed. So this would, um, allow us to clearly outline goals and go over the data and where their kids are and where we need them to be by certain milestones throughout the year and give them a moment.
Kind of combining a parent-teacher conference and a back-to-school night for kindergarteners.
Okay, on back-to-school night though, that's one of the adjustments that I alluded to, I guess we would like it that. But we, um, they, on back-to-school night, instead of trying to do it at roundup and all of that stuff, they would also bring in all the kindergarten parents and explain to them what those first weeks would look like. So we will have emails and messaging going out from the principals and we will leave things at kindergarten roundup when they bring in their immunizations and things, but the kindergarten teachers will at back-to-school night, this is what the first two weeks looks like and this is why. So they'll hear it from the teachers in person, yeah, which we think will help mitigate that issue. And then, yes, the parent, it will be like parent-teacher conference, everyone gets an individual appointment.
That would be great.
One school did that this year and they really, really liked it and their parents really liked it as well.
Um, sorry, one school in our district?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, yep. On Friday, it would be the student's official first day in their assigned classroom with their assigned teacher. So we'd be starting that second week, not into the third week.
Hey, and since we had the opportunity to be in front of you, we just wanted to do a huge thank you for classroom parents. That has been a game changer, that is fantastic for kindergarten to have another adult in the room. They can help with so many things and we really, as our team, as our district team has met, everyone is just so grateful and really feels like that is really impacting new student learning, so we're grateful for that, so thank you.
That's a result of Heidi Jo listening to you guys.
Yes, we appreciate it.
And making sure that we got it done.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for you guys telling her and her to do during the, the heavy lifting, I guess, on this side.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's been awesome.
Um, questions, anything?
I just want to, oh, question.
I was just wondering, you, you talked about the behavior problems on average. After you've done this this year and had a little bit more time to kind of hopefully make those more even, how many behavior problems on average for kindergarten, for the book in the classroom?
Um, well, I, I teach at Lakeview and there's, there's some there. They are way more balanced this year, I think we each have about two to three. But last year, one teacher had five and another teacher had one or none. And so it felt very, I was walking around tears in my eyes every day. And another teacher was living in bliss, you know, like teaching and intervening and enjoying and. So it's really, it's really made, it's really made a better team, you know, a team collaboration. Feelings amongst the team, I felt that my school has improved, I, we've seen a huge difference. We separated all of those out, we all get to, we all get to have some really, you know.
Fun experiences.
And then some really, you know, yeah, some really fun experiences, some really wonderfully high motivated, hard-working students too, so the balance is beautiful at Lakeview this year, I don't know, how did you feel?
Willard, I feel like we have a little different dynamic at our school, so we, we kind of were able to separate them out. I think we did a rubric of three or four or five and, and so we probably each have one really challenging student and then kind of that bracket right underneath, um, we have two or three of those each, but it still has made a big difference. Last year, we had, in fact, last year at our school, we ended up with, um, two students in one teacher's class and it really was, um, challenging enough that they had to move one of those students out. And that just creates a lot of problems, if you can avoid that, that is so much better. So we have not, I, I think overall, as we've met with our team, everybody has been really happy that we feel like they're so much more balanced and it, kindergarteners need a lot of attention and a lot of direction and it really helps if, if that can be balanced, so that that's not an overload for one teacher.
What's your average class size this year?
Um, I think this year it's probably anywhere from sixteen to twenty-one.
Yeah, sixteen or seventeen at Lakeview.
We have about nineteen to twenty at Willard. So in years past, sometimes it's been higher, I think last year the goal was to not be above twenty-two, um. It's really hard. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, I just think, this is from a, you know, parent of children that have had Heidi specifically and I know all of our kindergarten teachers, I am amazed at what kindergarten teachers do every day. Like when we go in for centers, like after thirty minutes, I was like, whoa, I'm ready to go. every day, like, when we go in for centers, like, after thirty minutes, I was like, whoa, I'm ready to go, because she does this every day, all day, with all these little people. And getting it organized, and then, those routines are so important, and, and I think what you've done to, like, I think for years, we've tested academically, like, I think when I was in kindergarten, they kind of had trained, but with these, I like, that's more critical, I think, sometimes, these behaviors, so you can manage those, so I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate the time that you've all spent, Heidi Jo, and you're committed to find good ways, and I think that communication is letting the parents know how important it is, and and how, if they don't understand how lucky their kids are to have these wonderful kindergarten teachers, send them mail.
For us to understand the why and the process is really important, so that we can communicate with that when we get asked about it.
Yes.
So thank you for this, and we'll know better how to communicate with our constituents next year, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, CNN five.